All right. So today on April 15th, I am here with Jesse Latoura, editor. And today we're going to be talking about city council updates or just plain city updates. And we're just going to have a conversation with each other about that.
Yeah, I thought I would, you know, kind of instead of having an outside guest for this, we would just kind of talk internally about some of the recent reporting. So yeah, I'm Jesse Latourer, editor of the Fullerton Observer and probably the thing that I cover most regularly are the Fullerton City Council meetings, which happen every two weeks. And so I thought I would maybe talk about, obviously, there's a lot of items that come up on, you know, city council agenda, but you know, highlight a few kind of topics that I think are, you know, important things that we've reported on that were maybe a little bit controversial, or there was, you know, some debate, you know, kind of happening around it. So I'll just kind of, yeah, I'll just talk about them. And then if you want to
chime in.
Chime in. Okay. All right. So we'll just kind of go in order. So let's see, actually, this was about a month ago. This is March 15th, but Fullerton City Council on March 15th, they voted not unanimously, they voted, you know, there's five members, they voted three to two to approve 2.5% sort of across the board budget cuts. And it was debated a lot, you know, during council meeting and, you know, members of the public weighed in because you know, the city is already currently like pretty understaffed, you know, there were a lot of positions were, you know, either laid off or, or lost, you know, during the pandemic.
I also believe that lots of people are saying that we still haven't recovered from 2008.
Yeah, that's interesting. Yeah, that was a little bit before my time of writing for the paper. But yeah, I know that back then they did a lot of cuts, you know, as the economy went down. And so there was kind of debate about, you know, does it, does it make sense to make further cuts? Now, the people who voted for it made the argument, well, it's more about kind of like fiscal sustainability. They referenced, you know, we have this sort of structural, you know, budget deficit. So kind of from a numbers perspective, it kind of maybe made sense to to make these cuts to get rid of our deficit. But then, you know, you have to kind of balance, right? The people who voted against the cuts were saying, well, we need to maintain adequate city services and we don't, you know, we're already really understaffed. Like, for example, like the landscaping division is like, there's like 18 budgeted positions, but only like four filled right now. So, so, you know, so if you make you know, cuts to things like that, like, you know, there's a noticeable impact in kind of sort of quality of life kind of stuff. Now, it should be noted that the 2.5% cuts eliminated 21 staff positions. However, they were all currently vacant. So they were like budgeted positions, but there was nobody actually in it. So nobody actually got like fired or laid off. But going forward, you know, the city is moving, you know, those positions are gone. So like, you know, when funding comes in to hire people, we're going to be kind of at a lower baseline of services and staffing than we were before. So that was kind of the, you know, the debate was like, like I said, sort of between, you know, doing the math of fiscal numbers versus the quality of life and services. And the council was not unanimous, but they ultimately voted to make the cuts. Another point that came up with that too, is the fact that the city of Fullerton got, I think $32 million from the American Rescue Plan Act.
That money was to rescue our city.
Right.
To bring back our jobs.
Yeah, like for, you know, revenue replacement and, you know, not all for that. I mean, there were different, you know, things the Department of Treasury said you could use that money for. But, you know, a big one was to make cities whole, you know, who had been affected. So there was also, you know, some discussion about, you know, why are we making cuts if we're getting this big amount of bailout, you know, money that's kind of meant to to make us whole? And we'll see what happens.
Who were the, the council members who voted, your name?
Yeah. So the two who voted against the cuts were Ahmad Zara and Jesus Silva. And I don't know, I would say they're probably the more liberal or progressive leaning on the council. And then the three who voted for the cuts are Nick Dunlop, Bruce Whitaker and Fred Jung. And Fred Jung has kind of become sort of, he's the mayor now. Yeah, he's sort of like the swing vote right now because he's sometimes he sides with, I guess, the more progressive minded guys. And then but sometimes he sides with the other guys. So he's kind of like this sort of a wild card.
He's, he's the swing vote.
Yeah.
So what I have here are the cuts that are being made. So we have four police officers, four firefighters, and then some utility workers, two non-regular part-time positions. So they're not going to be, so those aren't full-time.
Yeah.
And then most notable that people have been a little upset about is eliminate first night New Year's year event.
Yeah.
So.
So yeah, I don't know. I mean, it seems like these cuts are permanent. Does that, and I think that suggests that like those programs aren't funded moving forward. I know obviously they weren't happening because of the pandemic, you know, people weren't going out to big public events. But as we're recovering now, I think people probably, you know, definitely want to get out and would probably enjoy doing things like the fishing derby or first night.
Tree lighting ceremony.
Tree lighting ceremony. Yeah.
That was, that was very disappointing. And then reduce 4th of July event to fireworks though. So it's just going to be a fireworks show?
I think, yeah. Well, so normally on the 4th, I think, don't they, they close off some streets downtown? Wait, do they? Oh, no, they have a, there's a program over by the high school, I think, where they have like booths and events and stuff.
Okay. So 4th of July is just going to be a fireworks show?
I think so.
Okay. And this is totaling up to two, $2,700,000.
We're tightening our belts, I suppose.
Even though the belt was already
Already tight. Yes.
We were basically had a corset at that time.
Yeah. I mean, I guess on a more positive note, you know, the city is, so now that they've made these decisions regarding the budget, the city was kind of waiting on hiring or filling, you know, currently vacant positions. There's, because there's something like 130 something budgeted but vacant positions. And so now that the, they've made this decision, apparently they're going to start hiring, or they actually are hiring people again for the positions, obviously not the ones that were cut, but the ones that were vacant.
But yeah, because they didn't know which ones were going to be.
Yeah, they were waiting on the council to give a direction. Okay, should we move on?
Yeah.
Next topic.
New fire command.
Hopefully this stuff, so one of the things that I, you know, I talk about sometimes when I tell people like I cover city council meetings is that it's like kind of sifting through a lot of kind of seemingly boring seeming stuff. You read like agenda reports and, you know, it's, you know, I'm not like, I wouldn't normally be that interested in budgets and stuff, but I guess, you know, it is interesting in the sense that it has a human impact, right? Or has, you know,
These are, these are people's jobs, their livelihoods.
City services, et cetera. So anyway, so it's kind of, you know, like, so it's sort of like sifting through the, it's like, you know, when you watch like C-SPAN, right? It's not the most exciting television, but but, you know, nonetheless, people are making decisions that are affecting, you know, lots of people's lives. So anyway, so the next item that I thought I would, I would mention is at the last council meeting, which was last week, the council voted to end its agreement with Brea, so for fire command staff. So starting in 2011, this is actually after the the 2008 recession, you know, so cities were kind of thinking about ways to kind of save money. Back in 2011, Fullerton and Brea merged their fire command staffs. They still maintained separate fire departments, but they had like a singular fire chief, you know, that would for both departments and a few other higher ups. So the city of Brea sent a letter to Fullerton back in, I think, February, saying that they wanted to end the shared command staff agreement. And one of the big reasons why is because Fullerton is currently analyzing a proposal to potentially disband its fire department and then contract out with the Orange County Fire Authority, which would be a big deal because I mean, Fullerton Fire Department is like 100 and something years old. It's got this, you know, really kind of, you know, local history to it. And so, you know, that's another whole debate about, you know, we'd be losing some local control joining this larger entity. I mean, the arguments in favor are of joining OCFA would be that it's maybe less expensive. At least that's what their proposal, like what they told the city, like it's going to save you this much money. But the city is kind of doing its own independent analysis. The city's actually hired like a consultant to analyze the OCFA's proposal. But anyway, so Brea, you know, kind of seeing the writing on the wall. And it seems like from what I've heard through the grapevine, that the Fullerton Fire Department has been supportive of going to OCFA, which is interesting. Probably, I don't know, maybe it's just, you know, a more stable kind of organization. I mean, Fullerton over the last couple of years has had a lot of you know, not just challenges with, because of COVID, but challenges with kind of like leadership turnover, right? So we had, you know, like all these interim people that were kind of, you know, not, not necessarily in the fire department, but just, you know, citywide, you know, we've had like an interim city manager, two different interim city managers. We've had, you know, people going to other cities. So I don't know. Anyway, for whatever reason, it seems like the Fullerton Fire Department actually wants to go with OCFA. And Brea, you know, seeing the writing on the walls, like, okay, well, you know, we wouldn't then be working together because you, they want to, Brea wants to retain their own fire department. And I think the current chief, Adam Lozier, is actually going to stick with Brea. And so he was sort of our Fullerton Fire Chief and Brea's, but you know, now he's gonna just go over to Brea. And then so we don't, we actually need to hire a new fire chief, but probably in the interim, because ultimately it looks like we might be going with OCFA, but that's not yet decided.
Would that be then saving us money? Because we are then going to Orange County or the OCFA?
Yeah. So OCFA, a couple of meetings ago, gave a presentation to the council.
Which would then be same.
But yeah, it said, you know, it's going to save you, I think it was like $28 million a year. It was like, you know, a very large amount, but of course, they want.
They are selling the point.
Yeah, it's a bit of a sales pitch. Even though, you know, they're not like they're not a private company. They're not like a for-profit organization, but you know, they want more people to join because it kind of makes
Makes them bigger.
Stronger organization. So.
And then the, the firefighters, I heard that they are also getting a, a pay raise if that does happen.
That is what, you know, you kind of hear rumors through the grapevine. I haven't seen any like data on that. But I mean, it, it does say a lot that the fire department has not come out vocally during council meetings against the OCFA proposal, because there was another, I remember, I don't know, a couple of years ago, when Fullerton was considering this agreement with Placentia. And the fire department like came out, you know, in droves, like, you know, to the council meeting saying, you know, you know, we don't want to do this, you know, this is bad for, for us. So I guess you kind of got away. I mean, are they for it or against it mainly just because it's, you know, they'll get a pay raise or it's more, you know, more financially lucrative, you know, but then from a resident perspective, you know, how will it affect our services? Well, I think what most residents care more about is like, are we going to have the same quality of services? Like
Will someone be there when my house gets on?
Yeah. Or, you know, a lot of what they do is like medical emergency stuff. So, you know, like, well, you know, what will the response times be? That kind of thing.
I did hear people who are against it saying that they are then going to be in Huntington Beach and then having to drive all the way over here.
No.
They would still be in the same station.
Yeah, correct. Even under OCFA, Fullerton would retain its six fire station. The employees would, many of them would likely stay here in Fullerton, working out of those stations, but it would just be, they would be called OCFA instead of Fullerton Fire Department. Okay.
Redistricting.
That's a big one. I think, you know, we did a long discussion with
I think two hours long, I think it was.
With Professor Jody Balma from Fullerton College, political science professor who knows a lot about redistricting. And actually, I'm not, I really haven't been, I mean, I've been sort of, you know, reading about it and talking about it, but Jane Rans, who's our, one of our reporters has been really kind of paying close attention to the Fullerton redistricting. I guess the only thing that I would say is it's, you know, if you hadn't heard.
It's happening.
Yeah. So the, there's five districts, city council districts in Fullerton. And so this was a change that happened in 2016. It was as a result of a couple lawsuits arguing that Fullerton's previous system where people would just run at large. There were, so there used to be no districts. If you lived in Fullerton, you could run. And a couple lawsuits, and this has happened in a lot of other cities too, alleged that that at-large system.
Makes it so that lower income people were not able to run.
Yeah, yeah. Or it would, you know, kind of dilute the vote of like, you know, minority populations or underrepresented populations. So yeah, so basically that they said it violated the California Voting Rights Act. And so, you know, ultimately, back in 2016, we got these districts. Ultimately, it was a controversial process because you would think that it would just be kind of like data and math determining like what the districts are like, okay, here's the demographics, here's the, you know, mapping, we'll just input this data and then we can have like these nice districts. But of course, it's political as well, right? So city council ultimately got to choose a map last time that kind of, well, that definitely ignored a map that had been created through a lot of community outreach and work with a demographer. At the last minute back in 2016, this downtown like business owner submitted a map that totally cut up the downtown.
Into four different.
Yeah, like basically disenfranchised the downtown like as a district. And then the council like approved that map, which was like kind of a slap in the face, I thought, to like all the community members who bothered to get involved with the process. And a very similar thing, I would say, some might disagree, but a similar thing I think kind of happened at this time again, where we had a group that was comprised of, you know, a lot of people from the community that had created what they called the Fullerton Redistricting Coalition. And, you know, kind of, you know, gave their own map.
Huge community support.
Yeah. Well, yeah. I mean, if you, if you look at just like the numbers of like, how many people were participating in the public hearings and from the public speaking in favor of, you know, a certain map, it was undeniably, there was a certain map called Map 110 that the community like really supported. However, the Redistricting Advisory Commission, and then ultimately city council decided to go with another map, a different map. And of course, both sides, you know, alleged that it was political, right? Like
They were trying to keep a council member in, in a district.
Yeah. So the, some people were saying, we're talking about like Jesus, the person who was most ultimately affected by the new map is council member Jesus Silva. So under the new map, he gets pushed into, out from District Three to District Two, where so he will not be eligible to run for council for another two years because of, there's already a District Two Representative Nick Dunlop. So it was kind of, I don't know, it was interesting, like just kind of watching the redistricting hearings, kind of like, you know, talking to people about it. You know, nobody says in the, in those meetings, like, I'm doing this for political gain, or I'm doing this for political purposes, but they all, they all say, you know, the right words. They're like, oh, this is just for like, you know, communities of interest and contiguous and, you know, all the like, the terms that they're supposed to use to like have the best map or to, you know, that are, you're allowed to do when you're creating a map. Behind the scenes, I think there was some politics going on, just like as there was last time. So I would maybe side a little more with the community group, right? Because they
It was, it was a huge.
There's a lot of people, they put in a lot of, you know, input and workshops and stuff. And the whole process was, was complicated or made more challenging because of the pandemic. So normally, you know, when there's not a pandemic going on, they would have community meetings in certain neighborhood centers. And, you know, we hopefully get, you know, as much public participation as possible. With the pandemic, a lot of those meetings had to be like Zoom or virtual. And there was prob, some problems with public noticing, you know, giving enough time in advance. So the meetings were not really that well attended, unfortunately, when they were developing the maps.
Yeah. And I believe we only had how many maps? About 15?
I think 50. Yeah. So members of the public could submit maps, a couple of members of the Redistricting Advisory Commission submitted maps. And then the demographer who the city hired to like, make sure that the maps comply with the laws and stuff. He, he made a few maps as well, which were usually based on community submitted maps.
And then he just cut the edges.
Make him a little more compliant with the laws, I think. So, yeah, I don't know. It was a kind of like last time, it was, you know, it was a, what's supposed to be kind of a neutral process, kind of get, becomes political. And I guess that's inherent because you're drawing districts for political offices. So interested parties are going to do what they're going to do.
And I believe that Map 110 was also very similar to the map that was submitted in 2016.
Yeah, the community map.
Looked very, very similar.
Very similar. Yeah. So.
We'll see what happens. What are you gonna do?
Some people get really like, I don't know, I guess you could get, you could get angry or maybe get angry. I don't know. I'm kind of like
Going with the flow.
Okay, a couple more topics. Neighborhood centers. So another thing that I'm kind of seeing as, as a bit of a trend in Fullerton, which is not necessarily unique to Fullerton, is like outsourcing of services or kind of whether it's privatizing, you know, certain services. You know, for example, what would be, you know, like streets, do we do street sweeping? Do we ever run street sweepers? Maybe we do. I'm not sure.
I haven't, I don't think so.
Okay.
Do you think Republic?
That's trash. Well, so yeah, so we outsource.
I'm saying, do you think Republic also has a sweet sweeping?
Sweet sweeping. I don't know. Actually, that's a good question. I'm not sure about street sweeping, but for like trash, that, you know, it's outsourced to a company called Republic Services for like ticketing and like parking enforcement downtown. In the last couple of years, the city has contracted with a company called SP Plus. Our IT department has
Yeah, they did get outsourced.
Has been pretty heavily outsourced for the last couple of, few years. And so, yeah, it's kind of like an interesting development in terms of like outsourcing services. I think it's potentially problematic in, in the sense that if you're outsourcing to a private company, you know, like a for-profit company, I mean, those in favor would say, oh, well, maybe they're more like efficient or something like that. But oftentimes, you know, the people who are working for the private companies versus working for the city are going to probably be paid less, maybe not have the same kinds of kind of job security and benefits that you might have, you know, with like a government job. And maybe people think that's just fine. But, you know, if people want to be able to afford to live, people need to be able to afford to live. Anyway, so another, I guess another version of outsourcing that happened recently at the last council meeting is the city has begun leasing out two of its community centers to local nonprofits to kind of do, you know, community services and stuff. And this is not necessarily bad. I don't know if I have a a take on this. So the one center that was leased out at the last council meeting was the Gilbert Community Center, and that was leased to a local nonprofit called OC United, which is kind of, and I know they're not probably officially connected, but I just know because I know some of the people involved, it's an outgrowth of the EV Free Church in Fullerton, the Fullerton Free Church. And the, so they're going to be leasing the Gilbert Community Center, which is interesting is the, the amount they're paying per year is $1.
What? Okay. I didn't know about that.
So, well, so it's not really that the city isn't obviously saving or making money by having the nonprofit pay them leasing money. The, the way the city is seeing that they're saving money is the city doesn't have to provide
For those
Services. They don't have to pay employees to do those services. The nonprofits say like, hey, we we're basically providing these services essentially free, you know, because it's, you know, we're, they have their own like private funding or whatever. So anyway, so I don't know, that's happening in the Gilbert one. The one that was a little more contentious is the Maple Community Center, which is larger and is, was a pretty popular venue for people to rent out for like weddings or quinceañeras or, you know, just community events and stuff. So they actually decided there was a nonprofit called the Friendly Center out of Orange that was going to be leasing for a dollar a year, the Maple Community Center, but the council was not totally convinced on that one. So they actually continued that. So that, that hasn't like officially happened yet. I think it probably was because Gilbert Community Center is kind of smaller. OC United is a pretty well-known, like local Fullerton nonprofit. Maple Community Center is bigger. Friendly Center is, you know, from another city. And so they maybe don't have the kind of community buy-in or whatever, or familiarity that the other one does. So we'll see what happens. I don't know, like, there's a couple issues with it where one, if they are leasing it, then members of the community wouldn't be able to rent it out, you know, for community events. And then also
Venues and everything.
Yeah. And also importantly, it was brought up too, that if the city loses control of its community centers, then when you have things like redistricting, or you have to do like community workshops in specific neighborhoods that you really want to reach, then you lose that access. So the city is kind of giving up its own facilities to do the kind of community outreach that it's like required to do or needs to do. So that, that's kind of a drawback as well. So it's, I don't know, it's kind of like, it's seen as a as a cost-saving measure, but it's like, like anything, you got to kind of weigh like, what are you losing? What are you gaining?
Do you think that this is going to be permanent?
Well, the lease agreement, because I'm a nerd and I've read the staff report. So the lease agreement is for, I think, five years and then but an option for like two, five-year renewal. So it's potentially for 15 years, which is, that's quite a while. Okay. And then the last one.
Housing.
Housing. Yeah. So housing update. So at the last council meeting, someone from the city gave kind of an update on, you know, kind of housing issues. I would say the most, for me, the most interesting part of kind of the housing policy at the city level is cities have to put together, and Fullerton has put together something called a housing element, which has to go to the state for approval. And a big part of that is, sorry, kind of getting into the technical weeds here a little bit, but so cities are allocated a number of housing units that they need to plan for over eight-year cycles. So that's called the Regional Housing Needs Assessment. And because California is, you know, is, has this housing crisis, there's been a big push, you know, from the state to build more housing, build more residential to kind of like meet the, meet the need or the demand. And so for Fullerton's current housing element cycle, well, the last housing element cycle, the, the, the number that Fullerton was meant to build was like 1,800 units over an eight-year cycle. For this next cycle, moving forward, starting this year, and then
It increased?
To 13,000 units. So it increased by an enormous amount. And this was not just for Fullerton, this was sort of like statewide to kind of deal with this housing, you know, crisis. And so, you know, the challenge for the city is like, so how do we, they have to put together a housing element plan to plan for that amount of development. And the city doesn't actually build housing. But in the housing element, they have to show that we have identified sites where there could be housing. We've, you know, maybe created some programs that would enable that extreme density of, of housing coming in. And so of course, you know, housing is such a kind of contentious issue in California. I mean, it's obviously become increasingly unaffordable for your generation, even, even my generation.
Struggling college student, right?
Yeah. Yeah. You know, you got like, I don't know, what's the, the median home price is, well, like something like 700, 800K, you know?
Yeah.
Is that, is that doable for you?
I'm looking at Zillow and I'm like, oh my Lord, I have to win the lottery just to afford a home.
Which is weird because it wasn't, it wasn't always that way.
It wasn't. Yeah. It's much harder.
Yeah. So, you know, one, you know, solution is, you know, this idea of like, well, how do, how do we deal with this? We just like kind of build, we just need to build more housing. Critics of that would say, well, what we really need to do is build more like affordable housing. So that would be like, you know, like government subsidized housing through like vouchers or, you know, housing built by nonprofit groups that sort of specialize in affordable housing. I don't know. And then there's other group people who say like, no, we just need to build more at all levels because of kind of like supply and demand issues. That, I'm agnostic about that. I don't know.
That, that can, that can definitely hurt. If, if we have a lot of units here, then, you know, other people from other cities are then going to see, oh, they have a lot of units, the prices are going down. And then we're just back in the same boat that we are. So I don't, I don't really think that getting more units would, would be help with that. Especially since we do have three colleges in this city, so that, you know, we're, we're going to get students filled in those. I think affordable housing would be the, the, the thing that we need, government subsidized.
Yeah. The problem is unfortunately that, I mean, that kind of depends on higher level policymakers, you know, kind of allocating funding for that. And I mean, the truth of the better is given the sort of economic system in which we live, most new housing that is created is created by private for-profit market, you know, sort of like, you know, that kind of thing. You know, we do occasionally will get like affordable housing projects, like there's one in Fullerton that's in the early stages of planning for 1,600 West Commonwealth, there's an affordable housing developer that's going to, all those units will be, you know, subsidized and, and affordable. But yeah, I would say the majority of actual developments that, that come in, the majority of units are just going to be what they call like market rate, which means like super expensive. And I don't know, I don't want to get into the, it's a whole debate, the whole thing about like, how do we, you know, how do we deal with this?
Yeah, I believe a studio that originally that when I first moved out here was going for 1,200 flat is now going to be 1,800.
Yeah, there you go.
So it increased 600 for the same exact unit in four or five years.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's increasingly, you know, unsustainable for, especially for the, you know, the younger generation of folks who are trying to get into housing. And it's a basic need, right? Everyone needs to
Everyone has.
Shelter.
Yeah.
Food, shelter, love.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think those are all of the things that Uh, okay, well, I think those are all of, uh, the things that I wanted to mention. Obviously, there are many other things that the council is voting on. Uh, and they, they meet, uh, it's every two weeks. You can go to thecityoffullerton.com.
Next one's next week, right?
Next week, I think, is it the nineteenth?
Uh, the, yep, the nineteenth.
April nineteenth, they're at five thirty and you can go in person now, um, in the city council chambers at City Hall. Three oh three West Commonwealth Avenue. And you can also, um, view them remotely and you can also participate via Zoom. So if you, you know, if you want, you can just call in. And you can comment on items. And it's a good idea even to kind of check the agenda before the meeting, right? So you know what they're going to be voting on. And then maybe there's something you want to. Comment on. You usually get three minutes to say your piece.
Exactly, three minutes. If you say more, they will, they will definitely cut you out.
Time is, and sometimes they, they cut it shorter if there's a lot of people speaking. I've seen that happen sometimes, but normally three minutes. Uh, okay, I think that's it. Do you have any questions, Adrian? So there's a lot of info.
I still couldn't find whether or not we actually outsourced sweet sweeping, street sweeping.
Sweeping.
Sweet sweeping. Um, but I think, I think, uh, the city does it.
Yeah, maybe we still have those trucks.
We, well, for the time being.
For now.
All right, well, that's going to be, uh, it for us. Thank you all for listening, um, and we'll see you all next time.